Bucksport Town Council Budget Meeting for Thursday, April 20, 2023. The meeting is in person but can be viewed on our local cable channel 1303. We can view the internet by going to townhallstreams.com and selecting Bucksport. You can also email questions during the meeting to eslasiret@buxportmaine.gov or call 469-7368. Roll call Jacob.
Councillor Eastman.
Here.
Councillor Morrison.
Here.
And if you have this as absent, Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Your host is absent, Councillor Bishop.
Here.
Councillor Rankin.
Here.
So tonight we're going to take up budget items on outside agencies. As you can see, we have quite a few folks in here, but I want to give everybody time to to give their presentations. So Jacob is going to have a clock. He will let me know if we go beyond the time that we've talked about. And as always, we're pretty lenient with our timer. So if you hear a buzzer go off and you're in the middle of a sentence, please continue to talk and we'll we'll go from there. But I want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to at least present what they've got for us. If you have any handouts, when you bring those up, we've got some, but we'll also take them also. Then you want to start off with Sue?
Yeah, the first, in the order of the agenda, which also follows the face page of the budgets that we have, the first presenter would be Buck Library.
And just so everybody is aware of how we do this, we have a set amount that is 1% of our
Prior year's.
Prior year's budget that we have available to us to to hand out or budget for purposes. We won't make any decisions tonight. We've got to request what everybody wants, if we have questions. But on our final budget meeting, we'll see where the rest of the budget comes into play. We may make adjustments one way or the other based on what you've asked for. So please ask for what you're what you're looking for, but I can make no guarantees, and I think I speak for the rest of the council, that there are no guarantees when it comes to budgets, okay? Mr. Knoblock.
Thank you. I'm Doug Knoblock. I'm here representing the Buck Library. I think you all know me, and I'd like all the money you have available. Thank you very much. That, I guess that
Meeting adjourned.
I'd like to explain it a little more. I've given you all a handout, and it includes all but some, but certainly not all that we've accomplished over the last year. And we've been making a habit of coming in every three months or so to keep you folks in the loop and let you know about our progress. And when I look at this, it's, this occurred to me a little while ago, but this is what you and the people at Bucksport are helping to make happen. This is this is what what it's all about. And you, it's with this funding that is a big part of what's happening in this, in the sheet and our progress. The sheet I gave you is outdated. We have three morning patrons as of today, after I printed this, which is significant being it's just a Thursday, you know? And I'm not going to go down through the whole thing because I'm going to try to be brief, which I know you'll all laugh at, but the two heavy hitters on here I will mention are the new robotics program that we're going to start. We committed to last night. We voted on it last night, and it's going to be done for some of the the middle school. And it's going to be a rotating program. We'll update you more on it, but it's going to be a program where the middle school kids, it's going to be, because high school has had such good success, this is going to be funded by us and for, we have somebody who's willing to do it, and kids and so forth, and they're going to, they're going to work. So that that is a big deal. We were really excited about that. And the seed library, which has been getting a lot of play lately, we've had 32 people already take seeds and shown a great interest in that. Lisa was on TV last night, a little article in the Els North American Fallout today. And everything else on here, folks can all read it at your leisure. It's pretty self-explanatory. If you have any questions now, I hope they're easy. If not, I'll turn around and ask Lisa.
That's what I'm here for.
That's what she's here for. And if you don't have any now, but do have any in the future, you can always get a hold of anyone of us.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It says total patrons, 1,340. What are patrons?
Patrons are the people who have signed up for library cards. So these are people who have registered for a library card at Buck Memorial Library. That's different than the statistic of having, oh, apparently that does not in there. We had over 8,700 people visit the library this year. That is pretty significant. I am required by the state to keep track of everything because those statistics actually get rolled up to the state, but then get rolled up to the feds, which helps fund some of the grants and services that we take advantage of from the state library, like interlibrary loan. Our interlibrary loan is free. That is something that the state pays for with state and federal funds. But in order for me to be able to qualify for that, I have to keep all those statistics.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, Sue.
Are you doing the story walk this year?
Yes, I am. I was going to come next week and see if I could get your blessing. That was a
Just let me know when you want to be on the agenda. I just wondered, that's been very popular in the community.
Yes, I thought, well, okay, next week. One thing I will add is that you, Jim, you asked about the the total patrons, and something that struck me was, I asked Lisa today, how many out of our 14,000 or so in the, in our collection, how many are out at any one time? And as of today, it was 900 and some items that are lent, that are missing, you know, that are lent help on any, any given day.
And that's within a three-week period.
And so that's, that's a pretty significant number, 1,000 out of 14,000 total. So people are really, really using it. So thank you very much
Thank you.
For all your time, and you can now hit the gavel to beat.
Send everybody home. Next up is Home. Please.
So your budget meeting is always right the same week that we practice our annual report, so there's one for all of you. There may be a couple spares. Hi, everyone. I'm Tracy Hare, Director of Home Inc. This year, we're asking for funding support, for general operating support. Usually, we ask for support for diversion. And we, the reality is, we've, this year, we've experienced increases across most of our programs. In particular, our homeless shelter bed nights went up over 1,000 between last year, last year and the year prior. Now, for Bucksport residents, about 15 people in Bucksport experienced homelessness or reached out to us who were experiencing homelessness last year. They came into shelter and have been permanently housed. What's a real highlight, I think, for Home is our diversion program. You probably get sick of hearing me talking about it because it's so successful. Last year, we diverted 48 families and individuals from homelessness, and 15, 31% of those were from Bucksport. And to give you a sense of the cost savings to general assistance, we helped, we got a call, I think it was November, probably, from a family, a person who, I'm trying to de-identify as best I can. So a person whose partner had been diagnosed with cancer the same day their furnace died, and the other partner was diagnosed with COVID. So we were doing an over-the-phone intake. This person had never reached out to social services for help before. None of the other patchwork programs could pay enough for this response, so we ended up replacing their furnace. That diversion was $6,000. And the reason we agreed to do that was because to bring a family of three into shelter even for 90 days would cost probably around $3,000 a month for each family member. So the math just adds up. It's far better to keep a family in their community and in Bucksport. So I wanted to talk about the increases in our programs. We, our shelter department, about 7% of the homeless people we serve originate from Bucksport. Only about 9% of the food pantry patrons originate from Bucksport. But whether the numbers get higher for Bucksport is our resource programs, our back-to-school programs, our Christmas programs, and our basic needs resources, and diversion. And so diversion is really homeless prevention on steroids. So I'd just like to pitch to the council that this is definitely a cost savings to general assistance because I would venture to say, this is just a guess, that 99% don't fit in the parameters of general assistance guidelines. We've had program increases. We had 171 homeless shelter guests in '21, and in 2022, we had 202. We had, our food pantry was, I'm done, but the biggest number was the increase in the food pantry, in addition of 1,000 people reaching out for help last year. So costs have gone up 40%. We've got a ton of oil tanks to fill as well.
Well, I guess that's my question to you, is, you know, you've been, you've asked for funding.
Yeah.
Is that just because?
It's, yeah, it's just because, it's just because every, every program, I think most nonprofits can attest to this, no program is balanced in the nonprofit world. So the increase of 40% in every fuel tank we have across four shelters, we haven't seen a state funding increase since 2013. We have it, we're paying hard scrabble what they're charging with inflation, for example. We're paying all the market costs, we're paying mechanics what they're charging with inflation. So, but the nonprofit sector really hasn't had an increase in support. So we're just trying to keep the pace. We don't think we'll ever go back to a pre-COVID level of care, and to do that, we need to just ask people for funding. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next is American Red Cross. And then we'll, you know, like, if you are done presenting, you can more, you're more than welcome to sit through all the other presentations, but I'm not going to force everybody to sit here.
Good evening, everybody. My name's David Brown. I'm the Disaster Program Manager with the American Red Cross, and part of my job is to cover Hancock County in that capacity. So this is not the first time we've been here requesting some funds. So I think that you all know more or less the services that we do, and I believe that the proposal that we've given you, gives you some insight into the work that we've done as the Red Cross here in this county, and specifically around the community here in Bucksport. But just to kind of highlight a couple of the programs, obviously, for me on disaster services, you know, we cover all of our preparedness work, which is the home fire campaign and the smoke alarm installations, and we were able last year to install five smoke alarms into two homes in the Bucksport area. This year, we have been able to increase that. So we've, in Bucksport itself, I'm not 100% sure, but in Hancock County, we've done over 10 homes this, since the start of the fiscal year. In addition, of course, we've also collected over 1,000 pints of the life-saving blood, which is our blood services side of the work that we do, from 39 drives here in Hancock County. We do training services, of course, and 172 Hancock County residents have received that training services. For me, on the disaster side, of course, we also do the responses to the house fires. Last year, we responded to three disasters in Hancock County. Unfortunately, this year, we've seen a significant increase in that. We've responded to 12 fires in Hancock County. The most recent one was the very tragic incident on Verona Island, and that included a fatality. So the support that we can get from the community here is, of course, very valuable in helping us continue that work. And as the Red Cross, we are committed in any, in any situation and regardless to continue to provide that support to the communities up and down the coast, and as well here in Bucksport and Hancock County. So really, I don't want to take too much more of your time. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them. Otherwise, I, you know, thank you very much for your time and your past support.
Questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Home Health Hospice.
My name is Maddie, and I am the Foundation Coordinator for Home Care and Hospice. So we, just for a little bit of background, we provide home care and hospice services, as the name implies. And so basically, with home health services, we can receive referrals from primary care doctors, doctors in hospitals for folks who are well enough to no longer be in a hospital but require some sort of ongoing care for an illness, or maybe they've had surgery or recently been hospitalized. So the goal there is to have our care teams go in and provide care to those individuals to help them through their recovery process and hopefully prevent either admission or readmission to hospital, so keeping them in the comfort of their own home, not having to travel for their care, that kind of thing. And then we also have the hospice care services that we provide as well, which are for folks who've elected end-of-life care services to forego curative treatments. So in those instances, we similarly have our care teams go in and provide services and medical care that will hopefully keep people comfortable and improve their quality of life for the remainder that they have. So we provide lots of different medical services, you know, dressing wounds, monitoring vitals, administering medications, spiritual and bereavement counseling, a whole bunch of different things, also screenings for food insecurity and general home safety, just to make sure that folks are remaining safe in their homes as they're recovering or in those final stages of life. So in terms of the care that we provided in Bucksport, this data is based on last year, so 2022. We provided care to 81 individual patients in Bucksport, and then that was 895 visits to those patients, and then that was an estimated care value of 2,000, $234,900. And so we make requests to Bucksport and other municipalities to help offset unpaid costs of care. So a lot of our patients are on Medicare and Medicaid, some of them have private insurers. So from those folks, we receive some reimbursement for the care that we provide. And then we also provide care to anybody who's uninsured or underinsured and needs our services. So for those folks, we don't receive any reimbursements for the care that we provide. So the municipal support that we've received from you in the past and other municipalities across the state helps us to reimburse those costs and continue providing care for folks in their homes and keeping them hopefully healthy and safe. And then in addition to those hallmarks, we also provide some other community services, health services, so vaccination clinics across the state. So we'll do, you know, flu vaccines, COVID vaccines, to keep people healthy and safe in the winter. And then also various different areas, we'll do pop-up clinics for folks just to check blood pressures, things like that, at community centers and schools, things of that nature.
Great.
Any questions?
Are you, are you associated with any protective organization, or are you independent in all organizations?
So we're a part of the Northern Light Health System, and we have locations, we have office locations across the state, and then folks who are our care teams who go out and provide care in those communities that they're based in. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. I also have some copies of our newsletter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Health Equity Alliance.
Thank you guys for being here. We prepared a letter. I'm going to kind of read a little bit from it, but not take up all your time with it. At this point, we were notified on Tuesday of the re-categorization from the Economic Development Budget, that set of money that we had previously been awarded from for the 2023 festival, and moved to the Community and Social Services portion. At this point, we actually would like to request that our application is withdrawn. There are so many just vital organizations behind me that I've already spoken, and we just don't feel like it's the proper thing for us to do as a festival to take from this very competitive and much-needed category of funding. I would like to ask, though, that while we are withdrawing that, we would love it if you would consider moving us back into that previous category where we were awarded funding. There had been some concerns that if the money was awarded to Heal for Bucksport Pride, that it would not limit Heal to using those funds for economic development in Bucksport. We do have a memorandum of understanding with Health Equity Alliance, and we do have a letter that I'll hand to Jacob that he can put into the record and you guys can read later, that clearly states and defines their role and Bucksport Pride's role. One specific thing mentioned is that these funds are designated to Bucksport Pride and Heal's books and are not used for Heal's operation or services. So we clearly have a memorandum of understanding that does outline that, and I hope that that concern can be put to rest. Again, I just want to state that we really just don't feel that our festival is comparable to any of the services listed here and people coming in front of you today. So respectfully, we would just like to withdraw our application. And again, if you guys could please consider putting us back into that other category, the $1,500 that we're asking for would be a huge help. If we didn't get it, it would be a big setback, but we are confident at the same time that the community is going to rally around us and help us out in any way that they can.
Did you decide to move it back onto the waterfront, back on the main street?
Yes, actually, we did decide to do that because of the pool rental not being possible. And, yeah, we'll be getting a submit, we'll be submitting a revision to our application very soon here for next Thursday's meeting. But honestly, I wasn't prepared to really present tonight, so that's all I have at this point. But again, thank you for your time, and thank you to everyone here for all the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you. Thanks. Next is Down East Community Partners.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Good to see you. So hi, I'm Sharon. I'm clearly with Down East Community Partners, and I'm grateful, we are grateful as an agency to serve the community of Bucksport and for your support. As you may know, DCP does receive, like as Maddie was saying, some funding from federal and state sources. That funding is pass-through funding, and it does not cover our operating costs. Many of our grants, in addition, require local matches. So thus, I'm here. And that's, it is our procedure to ask for roughly 5% of the value of the services that we provide to each and every community that we serve. And across two counties, that's 82 entities, whether they be unorganized or not. So in the past fiscal year, DCP, as we call ourselves, served 397 Bucksport residents. The services provided ranged from maternal-child health and early childhood education through aging-in-place or elder services programs, so cradle to grave, if you will, in a, in a way. Many people know us as the place where you go for heating services or heating assistance. And indeed, we helped 101 residents from Bucksport heat their homes last fiscal year. 94% of those were seniors on fixed incomes. Another way that DCP is known is by our little white buses that tool around everywhere. And we provided over 3,000, it was 3,044 rides to residents of Bucksport last year, totaling over 58,000 miles. In total, the value of services, and, and those are just some of our, those are the highlights you, you have what we sent in November. But in the total, the value of services provided to Bucksport last year was over a million. So I'm just hoping that you will consider supporting our services. Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thanks, Peter. Good to see you.
You too.
MMA.
Bucksport Community Conserves. I lost my place, sorry.
My name's Ray Murrell, some may know me, some may not, and give a little information on our pantry. Since the cutback on the food stamps, a lot of money, we're seeing a good increase when people come into the pantry. The pantry served 234 people since February 1st to April 19th. That's a little bit more increase than we did last year. I don't know exactly what the numbers were last year because I wasn't the vice president in charge of food. I do know one thing, food is very expensive. My budget for food is at the, at the Good Shepherd, I spend between $700 and $1,200 a month. And over here at Shop and Save, I mean Hannafords, you, I pay between $800 and $1,400. And Hannafords doesn't give us a discount on our food. We buy at the same price that you do. But I got to say that Hannafords has been very good. They supply us bread, pastries, and vegetables for the day that we're open, and that's a great help. Last year, they noted 17,000 pounds of food, so that's, but we have a, a problem coming up that some high school students don't have food. They tell their counselor, and the counselor gets either ahold of Linda Hayward or myself, and we put packages together for them. But next, I'm working on a program for next year that they won't have to have, always call me. Maybe we can set something up at the high school where the counselor can just go in and get what they need. But we've been supplying people, not just with, the Talk and Shop is part of us, and we supply people with clothes, shoes, food, whatever households they need, whatever makes their living a little easier. And our motto is, or I don't know about the whole group, but my motto is, if I know you're hungry, you're going to eat. And we have 10 volunteers that come up every, every Wednesday and run that pantry. And I also want to thank the Reed School students. They come up and help carry out the groceries for the elderly people and the handicapped people. That's basically all I have to say.
Any questions?
Oh, good.
Thank you very much. Down East Transportation.
They may not be here just because we have a contract with them.
We have a contract.
Eastern Area Agency on Aging.
I'm Chris Johnson. I'm one of the two board members in Hancock County for Eastern Area Agency on Aging. The other board member, I'm happy to say, is Jack Corrigan, another Bucksport resident. That may change over time, but we're quite proud of the fact that we represent Bucksport very strongly in its group. The agent, the area agencies, for those who don't know, was a result, have been, was a result from the 1965 Older Americans Act. They decided back then that they wanted to help older Americans, the federal government. They got all this money together, didn't know how to divvy it out, so they gave it to the states, let the states decide how they were going to send this money out. Each state has had, area agencies have been set up, there are other mechanisms, too. In Maine, I believe, there's five agencies that spread this money out. And what happens with Eastern Area is their responsibility is Washington, Hancock, Piscataquas, and Penobscot County. So we cover a lot of space and a lot of areas. Historically, my records indicate, they only go back to 2014, there was a steady progression of increased funding from the town of Bucksport until COVID hit, and it was, it was cut back substantially at that point, which is understandable. The problem is now, is our numbers aren't coming back down. Much, if you hear some of these other groups, the numbers are staying up there. We went in one town from We went in one town from 480 some odd meals to 795. It's now back to 745 because of the COVID impact. We lost 20% of our staff, but we've got almost all those replaced now for various reasons. It's impacted us as well. What, what we're hoping to do, to be as brief as possible, as many as you know, that's difficult for me, we're going to increase contact with the towns and with the other agencies. No more of this coming in once a year and asking for money. We're going to be more present with the town administration as well as the other groups. We're going to increase our communication among all these different groups because we know that there's a bill in Augusta right now to help make that happen. But what we're trying to do is provide a great service. We don't compete with anybody. We provide opportunities, and if we can partner with those folks, that's what we do. We've asked all the towns that we service to increase this year if they can. And if they can't, they can't. But I appreciate the time. Anybody have any questions? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Childcare Center?
I'm Alana Boisver. I'm the new, well, new-ish director of the Bucksport Area Childcare Center. I started in December. We started in 1989 as a nonprofit childcare center and have been serving the community's children since then. We have a license for 49 kids from 18 months to five years, but not school age yet, and then 49 for school age. Our school age center is currently in the Miles Lane School, and then we have our younger kids at the actual center. What we're finding is that we have large waitlists, including we're unable to provide for infants at this time because we don't have the building capacity. You have to have 35 square feet per child, and there's just no way to do that with adding more, to add more children. So we're looking at trying to fund or get a new center built, and the money that we're asking for would go towards, we've hired a grant writer to start trying to look for funding and also to look at fundraising opportunities, which, you know, you have to put money into those, too, in order to expand and add an infant program, but also look at having all of our kids under the same roof, which logistically makes it easier for the staff. And right now, I know they're running out of space at Miles Lane for the summer. There's two other programs that are going to have to use the school because they're doing work on Juitt. So we're looking at having to be spread between like three different classrooms. So basically, we're just looking for money to get started to, with the grant writing process, to try and get the funding to expand and be able to offer services to our families. We did start an infant waitlist just to see the need, and there's already 10 children on our infant waitlist, and those are all families that already have children in the center. So that's not including, you know, other community members that aren't already at the center.
This look for a new building or new place has been in front of us since I've been here and when my kids went to the childcare center. So what, what, where, where does it stand? I mean, it seems like you guys are always getting the wheel started, but it never goes anywhere.
Right now, we have the building plans and a, what we're looking at it's going to cost, as well as we have the grant writer in place. I actually have the contract here for our board president to sign, and she is currently, she should have grant options available for us within a week, week and a half. I am looking at doing fundraising throughout the summer. Like I said, I just started there in December. But in that time, I've been working on bettering the program as it is, and we've already gone from a quality score of two to a quality score of three in just that amount of time. So, and like I said, we're looking at the grants, but we're also looking at doing our own fundraising, and our staff seems to be completely on board and are coming up with their own ideas for fundraising as well.
Do you have any idea how much you're going to have to raise?
The quote that we had was about a little under $4 million.
It hasn't gone down any, has it?
No.
Neither have ours.
I know. Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to comment, because I worked there 11 years. You weren't there then.
My son was there then.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I had just retired from home care, nursing home care, and it was wonderful 11 years. I had to leave because of COVID when I was old, too old, I said. So, but they, I, I spent many, many, many hours of wonderful time with those children, and I learned it too, and I just recommend that you keep going, get your building.
And as far as also what's kind of changed is that building has been there for a very long time, and we're at the point where we're going to have to move or redo the entire building, one or the other.
And you've been there for quite a while, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities?
Hi, I'm Vanessa Newman. I am the consultant for Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities, started in November of this year. We are a nonprofit that serves Bucksport, Orland, Verona Island, and Prospect, but a large portion of our clientele is right here in Bucksport. We have many programs that we either partner or are actually initiating. The Good Morning Program, Thriving in Place, we're now calling Thrive. We've opened that to a larger part of the population. We have a technology training program, we have a strength training program, and I also serve as the chair for the Age and Ability Friendly Committee, which supports the town of Bucksport as well. What I've been working on since November, we have a longstanding history of a lot of work done in this area, so I'm only speaking from my perspective on what I've seen so far as the consultant. But we've been revamping our entire website so that it is more accessible, people can make donations to our organization on the website. I have a handout that I will give. If I had a larger operational budget, I would have one for each one of you, but I have a couple for you to share. We've also been working on a new logo. We have been working on redesigning Thriving in Place. We have no state funding, we have no federal funding. If it weren't for the town of Bucksport, I wouldn't be standing here whatsoever. And I think that we are dealing with all social determinants of health, and we all know that prevention is an incredible part of having a healthy community. So we're looking at partnering with organizations on housing, on transportation, on public health, on social isolation, on mental wellness. We have a large factor that we're, we're serving and trying to reach. We recently also created a magnet for emergency services that I will hand out to everybody that is part of our agent ability friendly work. And we realize that without your support, we wouldn't be here, and so we're very appreciative. We also realize that we need to have a sustainability plan. So we are working on also donations, fundraisers, further partnerships with other organizations. Since I've been on board, we have written two grants. I'm in the process of writing a third grant as well, so we are adding to the revenue that you're providing through those grants. That is mostly what I have today. Does anybody have any questions? I will hand one over.
If you give that to Jacob, he'll email it to all of us. We have copies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and I can put one over on this side. And then if you would like an emergency services magnet, I am happy to share those. You do need to have good eyesight, I am working on that as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
I did just want to note that we have a memorandum of under, of agreement with Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities, and they serve as, thank you, Jim, they serve as the implementation arm for our AARP, Age and her Friendly, Age and Ability Friendly Action Plan. Say that three times. So part of, in, when the, the town has funded this, it is this, basically consulting position for the, that organization is to do our, our age and ability work plus the other programs that they do that serve our seniors, primarily our seniors, but also others. So just a reminder on that one.
And Val Suya is also here.
I was going to say, I, I have been with Bucksport Bay Healthy since I was, so and I'm still on it, and I really have been very, very interested in what we're doing in the community.
Thank you. Next is Senior Citizens Group?
Hi, my name's Bill Foster. I'm with, you have a Bucksport Seniors Group, or Bucksport Area Seniors Center is what we call ourselves now, I guess, in the, the theme of changing titles. And we do that because we're not only representative of Bucksport, but of Orland and Verona and Prospect and other areas, as well as welcoming anybody in from any community. We don't really ask. We have a radius where we deliver our meals, but when people come to the center, we don't have them show us their Bucksport ID. We serve meals, we have activities, we have stuff for seniors.
Can you get your van yet?
We haven't, but we thank you for, thank you for the van in advance when it's coming. We've told it's coming soon.
It's going to be in there, I guess.
It's, it's out in the wind somewhere, but it's coming.
Matt Piers told me that they, they did, they did, they refurbished it before they did it in their last, whatever that they were waiting, it was supposed to be shipped, that was supposed to be finished this week for, so it could be shipped.
But in the meantime, we have a good relationship with RSU25, so we've been taking trips. They let us use the van, and I, as Mr. Boothby calls it, voluntold. I volunteer my wife that she's going to drive one of the vans, and she takes us up to the theater, Abby and I. So we've had some trips, we've gone to Planetarium with their vans, we've gone to Penobscot Theater a couple of times.
What's your average number?
Depends on the day. We just had our board meeting the other day, so we do an average of about 60 meals on a daily basis.
Okay.
And I do know that number right off the top of my head because I just had to look it up. And that's all of, you know, our, including our takeout meals, our delivered meals, and our in-house meals.
Great. Any questions?
You've got to tell them about the other things the ladies, I, I have aerobics there. I mean, Wednesday and Friday, I got to go.
Valerie, why don't you just come up and present for everybody, you know?
Valerie, next time, it's just going to be Valerie here, next year, doing everything. Yeah, Valerie's one of our exercise, leader of our exercise group. They meet three days a week, and they are dedicated, and I wish I had that much dedication towards exercise or to anything. Because they are there a few times a week, every day, rain or shine or snow. Even when we have a holiday, she has key and she lets everybody in.
Great.
I will say that Bill has done and continues to do an exceptional job as the director of the center. He has initiated a number of programs. There's music, there's all sorts of things. There's every, every holiday is an event. Every month, there is a, there are people working on things that they do something special.
Well, we have a lot of stuff going on, and thanks to Hannaford because they have, every month, they send up a cake so we can do a birthday, and they send birthday cards to everybody that, we have a birthday board. Take a picture of it and send it down there, and they send out cards with grocery store coupons in them. So there's a lot of support from the community. We had a per, a pipe that burst, and when it did, it flooded our warmer bags, and we just asked for donations from the community and got enough money to cover all those bags. It was the only thing we had to replace, but, so now we've got new bags. Jim can tell you how good they work. He, he delivers for us. Instead of those pizza warmers, they actually have handles, they carry the food, and they're not floppy, so it's pretty nice.
Nice. All right. Any questions?
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Val.
Next is Main Family Planning.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Curtis, and I'm the controller at Main Family Planning, the whip director who put in this request. It's no longer employed by us. I'm not sure if it was her choice or our choice, but she's no longer there, and we're in the process of searching. And as the controller, I keep track of all the grants to the state and the municipal funding we receive from other municipalities, and I'd like to drop our amount from 4,400 to 1,000. I'm not sure why she asked for that. We, we, she did say in her report, we served 88 residents, total of $64,416 in food benefits, but we do have state grant funding for that.
Great.
So the reduction from 4,400 to 1,000?
With just what we've asked for in the past few years.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hospice of Hancock County. I bet I know who comes up for that one.
Who's going to cheer for you, though?
We all will.
I'll take my mask off, let me know who I am.
Well, anyway, you might have, might have, some of you might be confused by hearing that the other name hospice, but this is all volunteer, just so you all know that, okay? So, so this program has been 43 years, and I actually have been a member that long, since we started here in Bucksport and in one of the churches with just four of us, and we've kept this going. Right now, I'm still the coordinator for the town of Bucksport to take, we take referrals. We get referrals from physicians, and we send volunteers in. And we haven't had too many patients this year, last year, because it was a problem with the COVID. There was a rule set by some of the home health agencies that said that, that the people in the home all had to wear a mask when us, when a volunteer came in the house. And then, then they changed some other rules, so we didn't get very many referrals. We got two in Bucksport. I handed out those sheets, you can see that. We also, that was the Patient Care Giveout Support Program, where you send in a volunteer and they stay up to so many hours, what they need to do, and assist the patients or the family gets time on. Then they, the bereavement program, that, that's another part of the hospice program, and that's, we had four residents in Bucksport. And then they have what they call healthy support medical equipment, durable medical equipment, just like I do in Bucksport. But they have a, a storage area, and if you need to, wheelchairs and walkers and things like that, they have that. And then they have the educational programs, and that's what we did to make up the difference, to keep the volunteers, they did, they really did a good job. We have a new director now, and Jody Wolf Tucker, who signed that letter, is gone, and she, she just retired after 16 years. And then they have Kathy Belleron is the new director, and I, I've only met her once. She just came on board. And then we have the, another volunteer who is, is the, the volunteer nurse supervisor, and she's left, that was Kathy, and she's gone, but they've changed a little bit. As you know, people do leave and things can have to change. So we're asking for $1,000 for contribution, and I'm sure we will become more active as far as getting referrals, you know? Families can get referrals. People call me all the time, you know, and then ask if they can, if they qualify for hospice, can they get a volunteer? And so I don't know, I handed out some of the things, things that we do besides that, and you'll see it's, there's one program that's really nice, it's called Even Song Singers. They send in, and I never forget the time that we had them in the town site, and the cat got up on the window and was dancing when they were singing. It was so sweet, and so, you know, we, and they, they'll come in the patient's home and sing for them, and it's really pretty special. And they can put in a request, whatever they want to hear, they'll sing, and it's a nice group. It's in this little folder, yeah, right here. They're called Even Song Singers. So any other questions?
Thank you very much.
I've been here for years. I've been here for years. Well, it'll be fifty-nine years this spring.
We'll wait to see you in year sixty-two.
So you can see why I've been active in the community, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And everybody knows my daughter now, right? Because she, she did, she worked for you folks indirectly. Yeah. And she loves, she loves Bucksport. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry.
Good evening. Nice to be here. We appreciate your time. I'm with Loaves and Fishes Food Pantry, and we've been serving Hancock County for forty-four years. As you probably know, we opened a new facility back in October, and since then, a funny thing happened. What's happened, basically, is within about two months, the number of people we serve doubled, in part because the need is so much greater, in part because we've had so much publicity with the building of our new facility. And over the course of the four months after that, we've nearly tripled in terms of the number of people we serve. So in our old building, we were seeing about four hundred people, shopping visits a month. Last month, we did twelve hundred and forty-seven, I think. The need is just skyrocketing. Now, I also have the distinction of being the lowest number on that list. I might want to move the decimal point over a little bit or something like that. But earlier this week, we got your contribution for the current, for the current year, and thank you for that. We've upped our request just a little bit from four hundred to five hundred. Please realize, we have no, no federal funding, no state funding. We get about fifteen thousand dollars a year from nine or ten different towns, and the rest of it is basically on us through grant writing and fundraising and food drives and that sort of thing. Now, if we look at, right now, we're seeing about, we're seeing people from thirty-three of the thirty-seven Hancock County towns, and we actually see quite a few folks from outside of Hancock County as well. We don't turn anyone away. If you need food, you come and see us, and we'll help you. The average retail value of what a shopping visit is with us is somewhere between two hundred, a hundred and two hundred dollars. So I think for the number of people from Bucksport that we serve, you know, you're getting a good bang for your buck. When we filed our, our application back two months ago, well, what's happened since then, just in two months, is the number of people from Bucksport that we're serving has gone up more than twenty percent. Part of that is because the feds have eliminated the COVID-based fruit stamp benefits, and that's cost the average family about a hundred and fifty dollars a month. That has driven, you know, a number of, quite a number of people to us. So currently, we're looking, we're serving forty Bucksport families. Those forty families represent about, about a hundred family members. And in the past twelve months, they've made two hundred and fifty shopping visits to the, to the pantry. That's, that's our story, essentially, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
And just, how many, how many per families, are forty families?
Okay, forty families that we're currently serving, they represent about a hundred, actually a hundred and six family members, all right? And, and those forty families made two hundred and fifty shopping visits to the pantry over the past twelve months. Now, now, now in our new facility, though, they, they can come on a weekly basis and, and not, not with appointment. So we're expecting to see an increase from Bucksport folks and everyone else that we serve as well.
Where are you located?
We're in Ellsworth. So we're on Route One. We were in about a twelve-hundred-square-foot building on the Bucksport Road that was sort of in the woods behind the Unitarian Church, and not, not as well-known as we ought to be. Now, now we're right on Route One next to Darling Chevy, and, you know, it's, it's an eight-thousand-square-foot building, and it's given us so much more capabilities, you know, to serve our folks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello. My name is Ashley McMillan. I'm the Director of Annual Giving with Lifelight Foundation, and I am here to represent Lifelight, and we are requesting one thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars, which is about, plus or minus twenty-five cents per capita. And Lifelight of Maine is a state's only air medical and critical care transport agency. We are a nonprofit, and we are statewide. We have three bases throughout the state. There's one in Sanford, there's one in Lewiston, and there's one in Bangor. And each one of those bases, bases has a helicopter, some ground vehicles, and then the Bangor base also has a fixed-wing airplane. So we essentially bring the ICU, a very tiny, compact ICU, directly to a patient wherever they may be. So Lifelight of Maine has started in nineteen ninety-eight, so this is the twenty-fifth anniversary. Since then, we've transported thirty-six thousand patients. Eighty-eight of those have been Bucksport residents, two of those in the last year. And we have made thirteen scene calls to Bucksport, so that's landing somewhere in Bucksport when a tragedy happens. So at the foundation, we fundraise for capital, capital projects for Lifelight of Maine. The foundation is also statewide. We, our office was in Camden. Just a couple weeks ago, moved to Augusta. I live in Wyndham, so we're all kind of scattered about. But the buckets that we fundraise for, for capital are our fleet, so our aircraft, providing education to our critical care team, and also to local EMS throughout the state. We upgrade and replace our medical equipment. So again, those traveling ICUs have their ventilators, have neonato isolates and anything that you'd find in a hospital. And then also upgrading Maine's aviation infrastructure, so weather stations, landing pads, runways, remote landing zones and such. So each year, we reach out to all the municipalities across the state and just ask them to join in the support as we touch every community, partner with every community. And I know that you guys have been supported, supporting us for, I think, the last eight years, so we're grateful for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
If you come to a situation where I need to be Lifelighted somewhere, can I request where I'm Lifelighted to?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, they'll make recommendations depending on what level of care you need, whereas there are beds, you know, in the past few years, again, everyone mentioning COVID, there's not necessarily open beds every which way. So our physicians would talk to the sending and receiving hospitals to kind of figure out first where there's room, and then if you had a preference, let's say we were closer to Bangor, but you wanted to go to Portland, then that can certainly be accommodated. And we work with all the major insurances, main care, Medicare, and payers across the state.
Well, I'm through the VA, so I would have to go to Thomas.
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep, yep.
Or Boston.
Yeah, yeah. And we do go out of state, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
See you trip back.
Thank you.
Next is Families First Community Center.
Hi, I'm gonna keep this fairly brief. I only have one vocal cord, actually, that works at the moment. But my name is Terri Willett, and I'm the Board President of Families First Community Center. And we have a house in Ellsworth, but we serve all of Hancock County. We provide supportive transitional housing for homeless, previously homeless families with children. So what makes us different is our, when we get people in, we work with them to find out what they need, what they want, and how they could become self-sufficient. So they stay twelve to twenty-four months. So we're not an emergency housing shelter, but we certainly deal with a lot of the ongoing emergency needs as well. We've certainly helped and received a lot of calls from people in Bucksport. And we are full, so we have six families in-house, and like I said, we're, and I guess I've been listening to all the other presentations, so we, we have been very thankful to have received money from Bucksport for actually the last three years. And we, three years ago, we were like just getting going. And so you've, you've supported us through finishing the building, getting our first person hired, getting people in the house. We're full. We're starting to help people move on. We have an onsite childcare now, so we don't run it, but we have provided the place for someone. So another new business was able to take root, and we're adding programs all the time. So we're just, we're just really, we just finally kind of feel like we're getting us dried, and thank, thank you so much for, for your help, because we don't qualify for shelter credits. We don't, we have housing vouchers. That's, that's how we work. But essentially, we fundraise everything. So just so you know, some of the classes that we've been able to get off the ground this year, and they're open to anyone in the, in the community, as well as our people that live at the house, but parenting classes, healthy cooking on a budget, Tai Chi, financial literacy, and like I said, we're just, it's just like things are really starting to roll. Another thing that we do offer is we administer a general, emergency general assistance from a group of churches. So, so to make it easier for them, so they're not just, you know, getting all these different calls, we administer those funds, too. So we do have money like that, which we can help people when, you know, when the bottom falls out, and, you know, there's no other place to go. There is a huge need, lots of, lots of reasons why people call us. It's families with, you know, mom and dad, single moms, sometimes single dads, just a lot of stuff. This tells more about the specifics, so I just wanted to leave this with you. And we would appreciate, you know, having the same level of support. It means a lot. And I also, I guess the last thing I'll say is, all the communities around, like, nobody, everybody works together, and everybody kind of needs each other. And so we fit a different niche than some of the other organizations, but we work with them. So I just really feel like Families First is a piece of the puzzle, which is helping the whole greater area work, work better. And we're happy to be up and running, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Don't run away, just shoot him, real. Say extra.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is Eagles Nest Clubhouse.
Hi, my name is Carrie Tugaroa. I'm an advisory board member for the Eagles Nest Clubhouse in Ellsworth, though we serve all of Hancock County. Eagles Nest is a peer-based mental health recovery program, and they do that by creating a work order day in which members struggling with mental health conditions can come work on shared goals and on individual goals as well. It's a real help to get them back into the community and being, you know, sorry, this is my first meeting.
You're doing fine.
It helps them to get re-engaged with the community. So, and through this program, we're off, we're able to offer different routes to employment, such as like traditional career center type help, getting resumes together, doing mock interviews, things like that. There's also supportive assistance where someone may need to be connected to Voke Rehab or some other service to help with that. Or transitional employment where a staff member can actually sit in for the clubhouse member in times that their mental health struggles are overwhelming their capacity to go to work. So it allows some stability for the community employer, but also for the clubhouse member. But really, it's hard. It's a community for people that often feel isolated, that, that struggle to function on a normal day-to-day basis, for them to get a sense of community again and to re-engage. And what we need support with is transportation, because transportation is a big issue in this area. So getting people to jobs and things of that nature, and also being able to engage in the social activities that are offered. We're open on holidays for people that are feeling isolated or having struggles, even on the day. And we need a place to continue that work, and we're going to be, the lease is running out on our current building, the building across from the, what used to be the Max, and now, and we need help with technology as well, to keep everyone connected during COVID.
How long have you folks been doing this?
I believe they opened in two thousand eighteen or nineteen. I've been on the advisory board since two thousand twenty.
And how many folks from Bucksport use your services, do you know?
I don't have an exact number, but one in four people will struggle with mental health issues, and one in twenty-five will have one that impacts their functionality to the point that they can't work.
Is there a chance that you could get us the Bucksport numbers?
I will look into that and get those to you as soon as possible.
Yep. Any other questions?
What do you do in the instance of somebody who's a drug-related problem that's brought it to this point?
Well, there are some resources that we can help them find if they have co-occurring substance use and other mental health, but we specifically focus on mental health, such as anxiety, depression, PTSD. But again, they're a resource center as well, so they do connect people to all the services they need. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did a good, nice job. All right, that is all we have for agencies tonight. As always, there is a need out there, guys and gals. You know, we are, say it every year, we have a limited amount of funds that we are capable of handing out. I think everybody has a story that is deserving, and I would just ask that, I know we've taken notes and written stuff down, but when we come back for our final budget stuff, if we can put true numbers to these things, and we will have a number that we're, we can go up to, and then we'll, we'll be able to figure it out from there. So, any questions? Next week at the council meeting, we have some pre-meetings. I think we're starting at five-thirty or six?
Six.
I think it's five-thirty. Maybe we have five-thirty or six.
Yeah, we have regulatory review, we have finance, we have services.
Right, there's three different meetings or something, so.
One of your requests just tonight asked to be put on a different
Yeah.
Agenda for
Can you explain that, or?
That's what they were on last year, right, economic?
The Health Equity Alliance has been funded by the town for many years under the social services.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
And this last year, when they acted as the sponsor for the Pride group, they went under economic development after the budget last year, I believe it was council on, but it generated a discussion about the Health Equity Alliance is a social service agency, and it should be with the other agencies. How the funding is used is, is one thing, but the category of applicant is another. And so I put it back where it had been for a long time. And that's what Mr. Cole was referring to, was that it was not located in, it went agency, agency, economic development, agency. And, and so the request is to put it back in economic development. And that, and I asked because next week is general government, that includes economic development, if you want that. Yeah, I just need to move it out of the budget in one location, put it in the budget in another, for your consideration. This isn't an approval that I'm looking for. I'm just saying, do you want to discuss it under that topic? Because that was the request this evening, and I
I'm fine discussing it.
I'll throw a thought out, you do what you want, but I feel like the Health Equity Alliance scenario belongs here, and the Pride Festival belongs in economic development.
The Pride Festival can't get there without the Health Equity Alliance. It's not a 501(c)(3).
They need assistance. So they're going out of two. It's one that's, so they're going in two directions.
They're using that as a vehicle.
In other, other agencies have used the town as that same vehicle, correct?
What's that?
The other agencies have used the town, used the town.
Before Main Street Bucksport got its 501(c)(3) designation, it did.
Yep. So it's not out of the, it's just Danny had the question, and we looked at it. Go this way, like Mark says, we can listen to it next week, and then we can make a decision
Yeah.
where, where it fits.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chris?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
A positive note. Since I've been involved with some of these agencies or some of these programs, it's much better now. These agencies and these social groups are really watching what they're doing. They're watching their books. I look at some of these groups, like what that young lady, I never can remember her name, that's now the, the manager for the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition.
Vanessa.
Vanessa, thank you. I never remember the name. She's really doing good work. The library now is turning around a lot of things over there and being much more direct with their monitoring, their, their monies and things, and what Bill's doing, as we know. But what I also want to say is because, most of this is because of what Sue's done in the past to help get these things going and get them redirected. So thank you all of you for what you've done. I have more confidence now in the sincerity of these groups coming in than I ever did. Not that I thought they were being devious, but I just feel that they're keeping a much closer eye on what they're doing, and they're responding better with their requests. I think their request's a little more honest, shall we say?
In line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Want to take a motion for adjournment? Motion for adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, guys.